...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Pastoral City Council for Tuesday, November the first. For those of you listening on the radio or watching on YouTube, Mayor Steve Martin speaking. And before we get started, I would like to read the following. The city has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can listen to the meeting live on the radio at 12:30 a.m. or livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the council meeting to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link, www.prcity.com/youtube. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Invite all who are able to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for our invocation tonight by Pastor Pat Sheehan. Councilman Hahn, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings upon Mayor Martin, councilpersons Gregory, Hammond, Bosch, and Strong. Fill them with knowledge and wisdom for every decision before them tonight. Father, bless our first responders who bravely serve and protect. Grace our city staff with all they need to manage and care for our city. And Lord, we thank you for your great love and many blessings poured out on Paso Robles. We ask this in the precious name of your son. Amen.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vosch.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. All members are present. We'd like to take a few minutes at each meeting to provide staff introductions and also introductions of anyone in the audience who might serve on an advisory committee or another board that helps serve the city. So if you meet that criteria, as we go around the room, I invite you to stand and identify yourselves so we can recognize the people who do the work of the city. Starting on my right, please.
Warren Fries, Community Development Director.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined by Shawna Howenstein, Civic Engagement Coordinator, and Karen Jackson, IT Technician.
Shannon Bass, Report Manager.
Brian Burnell, Newшей Service Director.
Mr. Phil Warburg, Utilities Director.
Unhelicus Ford.
Pat Thompson.
David Vermaat.
Chris Udonis.
David Norton.
Don't touch one of them.
Terry Bass.
Mark Gettler.
David Abbey, City Engineer.
Mary Scott.
Yes.
Ty Lewis, City Manager.
And we have our city attorney, Elizabeth Hall, online with us tonight. So, thank you all for being here. We appreciate your presence. Prior to this open meeting of the Pastoral City Council, there was a notice to close session. I'll ask the city attorney at this time if there was any reportable action from that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We went into closed session on two items. The first was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549.57.6, and there was no reportable action from that. The second item was conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549.56.8, and again, there was no reportable action at this time.
Thank you very much. Top of the agenda tonight, as usual, we have a couple of proclamations. And first, I'd like to invite to come forward Mary Spahnhalts. So we have a proclamation tonight, Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day, November the eighth. Whereas Pastorables Police Department and all law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend upon law enforcement records and support personnel to provide them with vital services. And whereas the Paso Robles Police Department Records Bureau and support personnel are crucial to helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers. Whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintaining criminal statistics, and improving apprehension strategies. Whereas the Pastorables Police Department Records Bureau staff entered thousands of documents into the records management system, processed multiple subpoenas as court liaison, and provided live-scan services to hundreds of citizens. Whereas it is important to recognize California's law enforcement records and support personnel for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement system. And whereas the State Executive Board of the California Law Enforcement Association of Record Supervisors has proclaimed November 8th, 2022, as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 8th, 2022, as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day in the city of Paso Robles, and extend our gratitude to the Pastorables Police Department Records Bureau staff and support personnel for their dedicated service to our community, their diligence, and their commitment to keeping our city and citizens safe. Thank you so much. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about who you are and any other comments you'd like to make?
Sure. Mary Spahnhalts, I'm the Support Services Manager for the Paso Robles Police Department. I oversee the records division. And unfortunately, our hardworking record staff were not able to attend tonight. They had previous plans. They normally try to come in for this, but I did want to acknowledge Andrea Fletes, Caitlin Perkins, and Sandra Highskill. They are our diligent records workers. They handle all the court packages, they handle the bookings, they keep the officers in line. They're just, they're really, really hard workers, I can't even tell you. So I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging them because they really deserve it.
And I will probably get this one wrong. Robin Yakush?
Close.
So close.
So close.
How close was it?
It's yackish.
So it wasn't all that close, but (laugh) I picked the wrong syllable, I'm sorry. Robin, we are recognizing National Adoption Month, November 2022. Whereas the city of Paso Robles recognizes the importance of providing children safe, healthy, and loving homes in which they may become a permanent part of a family through adoption. Whereas there are more than 120,000 children in the United States adopted annually. Whereas more than 5,500 children in California are adopted annually. And whereas 33 children in San Luis Obispo County will be adopted by the end of this year. Whereas to help these children have permanent loving families and to support the families that provide these homes, the city of Paso Robles is acknowledging National Adoption Month to raise awareness about the need for adoptive homes for local children and join other organizations to celebrate adoptive families in our community. Whereas this effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states and the District of Columbia, will offer children the chance to live with loving, healthy, permanent families when they cannot live with their birth families, and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through adoption. Therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen W. Martin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, speaking on behalf of the entire city council, will hereby proclaim November as National Adoption Month in Paso Robles, and in so doing, urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of adoption. Thank you very much. Would you like to make some comments?
Yes. Hi, my name is Robin Yakish. I've been an adoption social worker in our county for about 16 years. And I have something I'm going to read, read to you. At any, at any given time, the county of San Luis Obispo's Child Welfare Division has nearly 260 children, youth, and teens in its foster care system. These children are in care through no fault of their own and are often the victims of abuse, neglect, mental illness, and abandonment. These youth yearn for the same things that other youth want, a safe, stable, and loving forever home and family to care for them. We sincerely appreciate the support of Mayor Steve Martin and the entire city council for helping us honor the tireless and noble work that our adoptive and resource families do for our youth. We would also like to use this opportunity to shed light on a growing concern within our community. We are very happy to announce that this year, our county will have finalized 33 adoptions, and nine of those families are from this community in Paso Robles. The effects of the COVID-19 pandemic have continued to present many challenges in our recruitment strategies and has had a significant impact on our ability to recruit and maintain new homes. While we currently have around 260 youth in care, 45 of which are from your district, we've only been able to place 23 of those youth in their community of origin. This means that nearly 50% of youth entering care from Paso Robles will need to be placed in a foreign community, which can often lead to education disruption and further trauma. With only around 120 active resource families to care for our youth, a significant number of homes are currently active, but have specific age preferences of zero to five years old. Our two most pressing needs are for homes willing to support short-term care as an emergency shelter home, or homes willing to care for school-aged youth, ages six to 18, especially teenagers. When faced with a shortage of this magnitude, it truly hinders the department's capacity to pair youth with the ideal family, and many times, we must simply place the youth wherever there's an available space. Scrambling around for a safe, loving environment for our youth during an already traumatic time adds another layer of stress and trauma to this vulnerable population. This in turn creates further difficulties and delays in providing stability and permanency to the youth we serve. It's for these reasons that we would like to encourage anyone interested in supporting our youth in care to please visit our website, www.slofostercare.com, to learn about the different ways they can make a difference in the life of a youth in care. There are many different ways to serve, and we know that by working with other caring collaborative partners like the city of Paso Robles, we can find more homes for local youth in need. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our Caltrans Quarterly Report. Mr. Curry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and members of the public. Gus Corey, Legislative Advocate for the city. Pleasure to be with you virtually this evening. Purpose of my report is to give you a year-end summary of what was accomplished over this past legislative session and the continued work to improve infrastructure in and around the city. The legislature had adjourned its legislative session on August 31st. Governor Newsom had until September 30th to sign her veto legislation. And now we're basically paying attention to some of the grant opportunities. One of the things that was accomplished through the budget this year was the acquisition of $3 million for Creston Roads that we can increase the scope to deliver the project as originally intended by the city. And so Senator Laird had carried this as part of his member's request on behalf of the city. These are limited and coveted opportunities that we've had. We've had the good fortune of having a surplus of funds over the last few fiscal years that made this possible. So this helps with our narrative on trying to deliver more multimodal options in the city and improve safety, especially for those that are traversing the route to go to school and such. We also advocated for the augmentation of the Active Transportation Program. The California Transportation Commission just issued its Cycle Six recommendations. Had this augmentation, which we advocated for along with SlowCog and our partners along the Central Coast, only 30 projects would have been able to be funded. Instead, the augmentation allowed for 93 projects statewide to be funded. And one of those projects, we're pleased to report, is the Niblick Road Complete and Sustainable Bike and Pedestrian Streets Project. And so we're, we've been recommended to receive $13.8 million. The total price tag on the project is just over $17 million. The Transportation Commission is scheduled to hopefully adopt the staff recommendation in December at its December 7th, 8th meeting in Riverside. And so we're pretty fortunate to be among the 21% of the projects that were, were funded again as we're trying to create these parallel routes, Highway 46, and give our constituents a true opportunity to consider mode shift where, where it's feasible. Next slide, please. So it was a really active year on the legislative front, more on, in the way of playing defense. And so before I get into the bills, Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, Governor Newsom issued a series of executive orders, one in 2019 and the other in 2020. The first one said that we want, we need to use existing resources, state resources, to try to compel mode shift, get people out of their vehicles, to drive down greenhouse gas emissions, and make transit more of a real alternative. The second one was predicated upon eliminating the sale of gas-powered vehicles by 2035 and investing more into electric vehicle infrastructure. So those two executive orders make up what's known as the Climate Action Plan for Transportation Infrastructure. The acronym is CAPTI, and that's been driving some of the legislative decision-making in the Capitol. So a couple members this year had introduced bills which we thought were going to be injurious towards the city, trying to complete, trying to complete some of the improvements along the state Route 46 corridor to enhance mobility throughput for goods movement and safety, first and foremost, really for our constituents. And so the first bill, AB 1778, would have eliminated our ability to have any kind of highway capacity project, and that includes any interchange developments, any kind of capacity. If there was a census tract of 5,000 or more people living along the corridor, which would have clearly been problematic for the city being that we are the city along State Route 46. So that bill had filled passage in the Senate Transportation Committee. AB 2237 would have restricted local sales tax measure plans from executing on projects that were deemed to not be CAPTI compliant. So again, it was an attack on highway projects. And while this doesn't directly pertain to San Luis Obispo County because it does not have a sales tax measure, it could have a chilling effect on its ability to put something on the ballot for consideration by the voters. So this bill was also defeated in the Senate Transportation Committee. And then lastly, AB 2438, it would have made all state funding programs committed to being CAPTI compliant. And since, you know, we just simply don't have the density of the Bay Area, our constituents have to drive further to get to work, to places of leisure. So transit's not going to be as robust as some other areas in the state. And there was a recognition by the governor that he needs to recalibrate the And there was a recognition by the governor that he needs to recalibrate the thinking on how to reduce vehicle miles traveled. And so we were able to help compel a veto by Governor Newsom and continue to engage on strategies that would allow us to improve our infrastructure while meeting statewide goals, considering that routes such as State Route 46 are major east-west connectors for goods movement. So next slide, please. So the Brown Act has been something of great interest in the legislature. Governor Newsom, a couple of weeks ago, has announced that he's going to lift the State of Emergency Declaration that we've been operating under to meet virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic by February 28th, 2023. We've been operating, as you know, under the guidelines established, the statute of AB 361, which allows for virtual board meetings as long as there's a state of emergency that's been declared by either the governor or if a local jurisdiction is to petition the governor due to some calamity that prevents congregating in person. So there was an attempt this year with AB 1944 to continue the ability for virtual participation in several jurisdictions. They've reported that there's been more public engagement, but the legislature thought that that was too broad of an authority to provide. And so what they came up with was AB 2449. So this bill does not require a state of emergency to be declared, and it makes an allowance for individual board members to meet virtually, but there are several conditions. And those include that the legislative body, so in this case, the city council, would still have to have a quorum of its membership meet in a singular physical location. And then for those individuals that can't participate in person, there would have to be some kind of disclosure requirement on the agenda as to why they were absent. You don't have to disclose what the medical condition is, but there has to be some kind of acknowledgement as to why they're not in person. And that opportunity is only afforded for three consecutive months or 20% of all council meetings or board meetings, if you will. And then you have to disclose whether somebody over the age of 18 is in the room with you so as not to influence some of the decision-making. And so many local jurisdictions are trying to sort this one out, particularly the provision about still having to meet in a singular physical space. And then what happens if your medical condition extends beyond a three-month period? So folks are trying to work out the kinks. And so that's why there's the reference to the good, which was AB 361, the bad, that 1944 didn't progress, and the ugly, just given the uncertainty with the application of 2449. So next, and last slide, please. So what's next for us? So Public Works and City Manager and I have been working very closely with our statewide partners, local partners, SlowCog, the Central Coast Coalition, Caltrans District 5, the California Transportation Commission, and others to try to make some additional headway on making improvements on State Route 46. To date, the state has made over $700 million worth of investments on the State Route 46 corridor. That's ended at the state, or sorry, at the city limits. And so we're trying to put together a $52.5 million, trying to fill the void on that $52.5 million need to be able to help facilitate better safety improvements. And in the state budget this year, the governor had $1.2 billion. That was to help develop more inland ports in the Central Valley, which is only going to put more stress on State Route 46, which Councilmember Strong has always reminded us is the only east-west connector within a 274-mile radius between Ventura and Gilroy. And so that really underscores the importance of the route. So we're going to try to pursue some of these grant opportunities provided by the California Transportation Commission and then the federal opportunities under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that Congress approved last November. And in addition, we've had a couple opportunities for the Transportation Commission to come and visit. It's been a couple of years. That was certainly pre-pandemic. The composition of the Transportation Commission has vastly changed. Out of 11 members, there's only two holdovers from when we last hosted in 2020. And then we're going to work with Senator Laird's office to try to get us all together and see what our funding strategy is, given that we're pretty close to having the environmental work completed, which will make us competitive, we're hoping, for completing the corridor. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions that you or council members may have and just really appreciate all the work that Public Works staff has been doing this year to bring some resources back into the city.
Thank you very much for that update. This is an information report. No council action is necessary. That being said, any council questions, Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Gus, I had a question. The other night, Friday, we had a meeting with the Channel Islands League of Cities, and Fiona Ma was there, our state treasurer. And I can't believe how many times she said in her little talk that she has money, "Come talk to me." Is that a, I mean, I know that staff also met with her while she was here, but is that a resource for you and to basically try to have them look at Paso Robles and our intersections here, you know, between State Route 46 and 101? Put eyes on us a little more with what we have against us here with all the infrastructure projects we have to do?
Yeah, council member, thanks for the question. So I have a fantastic relationship with her that dates back to when she was serving as an Assembly member. I wasn't privy to the conversation, although City Manager Lewis let me know that you guys had the meeting. And so waiting to debrief and certainly happy to talk to her and see what we can do. You know, as treasurer, typically what she's able to do is help out with financing, bonding. So I'm wondering what ideas she has. I mean, I can certainly reach out to her. I didn't want to do that before I had the benefit of debriefing with city staff first. But it definitely helps to raise the profile, and she's obviously well-respected. So we're happy to incorporate her in our discussions going forward to try to help compel a favorable outcome.
Yeah, I know. The way she was talking, you know, it was like, you know, her money she wants to give out, and I was almost about ready to say, you know, "These are tax dollars that we'd like to get back to Paso Robles," you know? I mean, we all pay for it, and certainly we need some really help looking down further here. But anyway, appreciate all you can do with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Is there anyone in the public who would have a question about this report? Welcome, sir.
Dale Guston. I have a question about, has there been any timeline established for the town hall meetings?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question? I see no one standing in line, so we're going to call that to a close. And Mr. Curry, do we have a timeline for a town hall meeting?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're going to coordinate with Senator Laird's office and then see what's a feasible time for everybody to meet. You know, we're going to get close to the holiday season, so it could be early next year. And that's sort of been our tradition with the last couple that we've had.
Very good. No more comments from council, no more comments from public. Thank you very much for that report, and we're going to move on now. We come out of general public comments. This is the time the public may address the council on items within the council's purview but not scheduled on this agenda. All persons desiring to speak on an agenda item are asked to fill out speaker information cards and give them to the city clerk prior to speaking. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes per item. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at that time, at the time the item is being considered. State law does not allow the council to discuss or take action on issues not on the agenda except that members of the council or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights. That being said, I'm opening general public comments. Welcome, sir.
Dale Guston again, 5770 Vista Serrano Way, Paso Robles. I want to thank you for establishing the additional 30-minute parking spaces in the downtown sorely needed and requested over six months ago before you dissolved the Parking Commission. And my two requests are to reestablish the Parking Commission so we can work on that problem. And third, in the interim, I think the way to be fair to the locals is to make the first three hours free. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to make general public comment? Welcome.
Good evening. Larry Warner, 741 Orchard Drive. I'd like to congratulate and thank city staff, city council, and Mayor Martin for their incredible success in obtaining transportation grants recently. Caltrans gentlemen touched on some of these, but I'll give you some more details. The Niblick Road Complete and Sustainable Streets Project is recommended for $13.8 million in funding for paving, crosswalks, sidewalk gap closure from Ramblay to Country Club signage, and a Class 1 bike path on the north side of Niblick. This project stretches from Spring Street to Creston Road. The Creston Corridor Project starts construction in 2023, received $3 million in state funding for paving, corridor enhancements, new signals at Bowlin and Walnut, and sidewalks. The Flamsen Middle School Safe Road School Project was awarded $750,000 community enhancement grant from SlowCog. The project includes crosswalk enhancements, signal upgrades at 24th Street, striping, crosswalk lighting, flashing pedestrian signage, enhanced student drop-off zones. And the other one is North River Road Class 1 Bike and Pedestrian Pass was awarded a $350,000 community betterment grant for the design of a Class 1 bike path that will link the Union Creston Class 1 Bike Path with River Oaks Drive. This project will further enhance the goal to construct a Class 1 pedestrian and bicycle path that will circle the city. The city will seek grant funding for the construction once the design for this segment is complete. Now, these grants don't come easy. It takes a lot of work, a lot of coordination, a lot of participation to be able to obtain these grants. The Caltrans gentleman gave the example of the 433 people that applied for what we got, the Niblick one, only 93. And that's a $13.8 million grant. It's going to go a long way to improving that corridor and a really good timing for that type of a thing. And these were made possible because the city council adopted planning documents that laid the foundation for the people giving these grants to know that we had our act together and we're ready to do something with it. So those included the Niblick and Creston Corridor Plans. And the Niblick Corridor Plan was really interesting because I participated in that because it included not only staff and the council, but incorporated input from the schools. There were workshops, there were onsite visits, there were setups with cones to show where the bike lanes and things were going to be. So there was a lot of work that went into that, and so I was very pleased that we succeeded. So thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
Yes.
Evening.
Good evening. My name is Krista Saban, and I'm the president of the 16th District Agriculture Association, better known as the Paso Robles Event Center and home of the California Midstate Fair. And I am simply here tonight to express my gratitude and the board's gratitude to the council's efforts over the last 90 days in working with us in a very friendly and professional manner to push the purchase and sale of the Pioneer Park property forward. As you recall, we stood before you in July, recognizing that there were some obstacles that we weren't sure, but the district was here to try to assure you that we could work through those obstacles and come to an agreement on the purchase of the Pioneer Park property. Tonight, I am feeling very optimistic, dare I say confident, that we are in a place that I truly think that we are going to get this deal inked in November. And much of that is due in large part to Mayor Martin and Councilmember Gregory and City Manager and their council, working with us, meeting with us, working through the issues. Your time, energy, and effort has not only gone unnoticed, but very, very appreciated. So thank you. I am looking forward to November to see that this deal comes to fruition. We are thinking about all of you over the course of this next week and all of those that are being reelected and going through this voting process or election process. We wish you all the best, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for some notes here. Spoke, Monty Jones, resident, spoke the last couple of weeks here. I have to come back again because the last time I've been talking, I talked about the ridiculous fees, just as a basic affordability issue in town, the fees and hookups for basic housing in this town. It's the main point of mine. You know, last time you mentioned 200 units coming up on Creston Road. Now, that's Trinity Project. If you look at their other projects, the closest one, their Arrive, is down at Thousand Oaks. A one-bedroom, 700 square foot is $2,400 to rent. The two-bedroom, two-bath is $3,000 a month to rent for 1,100 square feet. I'd hardly call that affordable for this town. Now, if it would be, you know, the average income for a household in this town is $70,000 according to the census data, I mean, are we expecting families to pay half their income for one of these apartment units up here? I really, we need to have some sort of moratorium on entry-level, affordable housing in this town, under 1,200 square feet, whatever it might be, duplexes, fourplexes, triplexes in the town center area. We're going to hollow out this town with our working class. People are already commuting from Shandon to Tascadero, you know, the 30 and under. People that are working our restaurants, our hospitality, our vineyards, they can't live in town anymore. Your plumbers, your electricians, there's a real affordability issue. And I think part of that is, you know, when you charge 25, up to 25% of the build cost in fees and hookups, you know, we run into a problem, and then that is pushed back onto the renter. And the Arrive unit, luxury apartments up there, I don't think $2,500 for 1,000 square feet is a sustainable model. You know, we're going to hollow this town out, just like what's happened down over the grade. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? I see no one rising. I see no one in line, online. We'll close public comment, and we will move forward. I didn't hear any questions to be answered. We do appreciate your comments and input. I'll ask the city manager if we have any agenda items to be deferred.
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
We move on then to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, not requiring separate discussion. However, if discussion is wanted by a member of the council or public, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Council members and members of the public may offer comments or ask questions of clarification without removing an item from the calendar. Individual items are approved by the vote that approves the consent calendar. Unless an item is pulled for separate consideration, items pulled from consent are usually heard at the end of the meeting. I'll ask the city council if there are any brief questions or any items to be polled. Gentlemen? Seeing none from the public? Yes, sir.
Number seven, because I don't understand any of the particulars of it.
Do you have a question, or do you just want it pulled?
Well, I'd like to know the particulars of it.
Very good. Seven is pulled. Anyone else?
Yes. Number eight and number 11, I have a brief question and comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. Jeff Carr, Paso Robles. Number eight, yeah, interesting project, but my question is, what costs, if any, from this project were inconsiderate as part of the water rate study and are possibly driving any of the rate increases that are on the table right now? And regarding 11, the receipt of the treasurer's report, last meeting I was here discussing the new changes to the report and some improvements that I thought would make it even better. And I think at that time, the mayor asked Mr. Cornell whether the quarterly report would meet my needs, and Mr. Cornell answered yes, but I'm here now to say no, that it doesn't. The quarterly report is The quarterly report is more detailed, but it's still one or two layers of summary above what I was talking about in the treasurer report. You know, having down to the actual revenue category is much more helpful, at least to a person like me and others that I know that try to, you know, research this type of information. And I think overall, you know, scrutiny is, it helps everything. It'll help the city, it'll help the public understand. The more transparency and scrutiny, the better, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Warren, can you respond to the question regarding item number eight, or someone anyway? Sorry, picked the wrong person. I apologize. Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Thompson with your Utilities Department, city's wastewater manager. The project referred to in number eight is what we call the Salinas River Segment of the city's recycled water distribution system. That's a $4.7 million project to build a pipeline about 2,000 feet underneath the Salinas River and up the bluff on the east side of the river across from the wastewater treatment plant, one of the more difficult components of the project to build. That project has received a $3.5 million grant, so the majority of the project cost is covered by the grant. The rest of that particular project cost and the rest of the larger recycled water distribution system costs, our plan is to finance that through low-interest loans from the state of California, hopefully in combination with significant grants. The security for those loans will be the city's sewer enterprise fund, not the water fund. And so that particular project cost is not built into the recent water rates study.
Very good. Thank you. And Mr. Cornell, for those that would like much greater detail on city finances, is that a report you could generate on a ad needed basis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Just the citizens of the communities need to request specific certain reports of what they're actually looking for, and those information is public and transparent to anybody that wishes to seek it.
Right. So, I mean, go ahead, John.
Well, I was going to mention, you mentioned, I think, previously that we're getting new software that will be able to drill down.
Yeah, in addition to the normal public records requests that the city must respond to. In the second year of the budget, there is allocations for transparency software, which will provide real-time information to the public on the city's website.
Yeah, but even notwithstanding that, someone in Mr. Carr's position who requires greater granularity would be able to get that from your department.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can augment that comment, too. I think Mr. Cornell and his finance team also prepare annual financial report that probably goes into the detail that many people are looking for. And not to Mr. Cornell's horn too much, but their award-winning reports that are being generated out of there with the level of detail to earn some very prestigious accolades. So there are printed materials that come out to certify what we're doing on an annual basis. We try and condense those on a quarterly basis to manage our time through staff. But if there are additional details that somebody needs, we're happy to look into those and see what we can produce.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no other questions about the consent calendar from the public, and I see no one online, I'll bring it back to the council and entertain a motion. Mr. Strong?
My question is, I think Mr. Gustaf just wanted to detail what it's about.
The word detail triggers it for me. I mean, if there was a specific question about the event, I would say, let's answer that. But if we're going to go into detail, that's going to wind up being a discussion, so. Can I have a motion? Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and approve items four through six and eight through 11.
Second by Gregory.
Got a motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Here. Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bosch?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And I want to remind everyone once again that all of our agendas and minutes and staff reports are placed upon our city website at prcity.com under the Government tab. And you can see all of those reports prior to the city council meeting. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to take advantage of that service, I'll ask the city manager to please give us a recap of the actions taken on our consent calendar tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several items tonight. The first of which is approval of the October 18th city council meeting minutes, followed by a special meeting on 10/19, city council minutes for those. Number six is the receipt of the warrant register. Number seven has been pulled. Number eight was briefly discussed, which talks about the recycled water distribution system and approval of an amount up to $340,000 to forward that project. Next item is approval to award a contract to Kaufman and Associates for planning and environmental consulting at the municipal airport in the amount of $30,000 annually for up to five years. Number 10 is approval of side letters of agreement with the Service Employees International Union, Paso Robles Police Association, and Paso Robles Professional Firefighters, which is concerning our health care benefits. And then the last item is receipt of the treasurer's report, August 2022.
Thank you very much. We move on now to public hearings. Item number 12 is a municipal code update, street and alley frontage improvements. Mr. Athie?
Thank you, Mayor Martin, members of council. David Athie, city engineer, here today to talk about permit streamlining for encroachment permits, especially when they're required for private development projects, when a building is constructed. So just a little background, they're required when the valuation, the construction valuation of a project is over $47,000 in value. Now, that's the trigger level. In the code, it says 25, but that's actually bumped up every year for the BNI amount. It's an inflation amount for building projects throughout the year. So that's within the code, and that's how that works. And every year, I put out a memo saying that this is the new trigger level. The last update of the code was in 2006, so it's not stale, but it was born out of a different era. It's gone through a recession and now a pandemic. So we thought it'd be good to, you know, take a fresh eyes and look at it. Also, inflation has taken its toll on the building sector. You know, material costs, whether it's concrete, steel, whatnot, is higher now than just the last few years. State housing laws have changed. ADUs are exempt from frontage improvements. So we wanted to acknowledge that in our code. ADA requirements are now more formalized. The Department of Justice has issued a number of rulings and guidance out there that, you know, tells us when things have to be, what infrastructure that we own has to be upgraded at what point. And so it's more specific than it was in the past. There's redundant sections in there, just cleaning that up. It's kind of ambiguous sometimes, who does the valuation of the building improvements, who makes the call. So we're just trying to clean that up and make it more friendly for everybody involved. Also, in the number eight, it doesn't really recognize quality-of-life improvements. What I mean by that is sometimes I get folks coming in, and all they want to do is build an addition, a bedroom, for grandma, for grandpa, for dad, mom, somebody like that. And when it's over the threshold, you know, they may have to do frontage improvements. Not always, because if it already exists, we're not going to make them do it over again. But if something's missing, let's just say a curb, they may be required to do that curb, when all they wanted to do was put an addition on the house to house grandma. So getting to our goal of today's update, we want to streamline permitting. We want to make it very clear for the builders and the homeowners and everybody out there, you know, what exactly are these rules? How do they apply? When do they apply? And what do they have to do? Again, allow for quality-of-life improvements, you know, not ding people for just building a simple addition to their house or someone's dream kitchen, right? That's another one that we see sometimes, that will come in, an addition for a dream kitchen. We want to clarify the exemptions. Right now, there's only one exemption. That's for large lots over 2 and 1/2 acres. They don't have to do frontage improvements. They just have to do improvements for fire access to the property along the frontage. We want to also respond to the economic changes that have occurred, the pandemic. We saw building material prices just shoot through the roof because they weren't, you know, processing trees in the lumber anymore, or not as much. And then there was fires in the lumber mills. And then, you know, then the pandemic hit. So these things have all added to, you know, a tough construction market where things are just more expensive now, just your regular construction. So that's responding to economic changes. And then finally, you know, one of our goals is, you know, when someone has a fire or there's a natural disaster, you know, one of the goals here is to remove that. Right now, there are folks that have a fire are required to ask for a waiver from the Planning Commission. But they still have to pay an in-lug fee, if they get the waiver, for those frontage improvements. So the whole idea was to provide relief, I believe, for a fire, let's say. But then we're still saying you need to pay for frontage improvements, and that money would go used somewhere else. Well, I think they would want it used in front of their house. It doesn't happen very often, you know, because a lot of places have frontage improvements. We've had fires in the past, unfortunately. And, you know, most of those folks haven't had to do anything anyways. But we just wanted to clarify this goal so it's, you know, more resident-friendly and really not double ding somebody, have a fire, and I got to do frontage improvements at the same time. So that's our current code. The current trigger is 47,000. There is a limit on how much the city can ask for, and that's 25% of the valuation of improvement. So just a quick example, if the addition costs $100,000, we could ask for up to $25,000 to be spent on frontage improvements. Now, a lot of folks go get their loan first, then come and get their thing, get their house, whatever addition designed, and then they come to me and say, you know, I have to tell them, no, you're going to spend some more money. And then it's hard to watch, and I know it's painful for them. So we're just trying to improve that so it's less painful for everybody, especially the homeowner. It provides direction on improvements. You know, it's general in nature, gives guidance, but it's not definitive. There's only currently one exemption. It allows for postponements, but that's only for parcel maps. The next, the code update is the same way, but I just clarified it so it's upfront. So it's very clear. Again, the natural disaster has to pay an in-lug fee. There's a duplicate section in the code we're getting rid of, and quality-of-life improvements are recognized. So the proposed code tonight includes seven new exemptions. We raised that trigger to 75,000, essentially almost doubling it. I did an analysis of the permits that have been issued in the last year. This would not, this level of, this trigger level would not include all those smaller quality-of-life improvements. So we've got that set at this level, you know, based on the construction costs and how it's gone up really quickly. Additions, so we're exempting additions as long as they don't add on more than 50% more square feet. So if the house is 1,000 square feet, if they add 499 square feet, it'd be exempt. It's clear. And that allows for those quality-of-life upgrades. Also, we're exempting barrier code. Okay, this is kind of an interesting one. So the building code, when you spend X amount on your building, you also have to do barrier removal projects, which are like ADA projects, handicap projects. So they're already doing, you know, onsite, they're doing improvements to their facility to let everybody have access to their facility. What we're saying here is, we're not going to double ding you and now have you go out on the street and do more work on the street. So we want to really encourage people to upgrade their buildings to meet the accessibility requirements in the building code and not double ding them when they come in for the permit. ADUs exempt. So state losses, ADUs are not subject to frontage improvements. However, if they do need a drive approach, we are going to, we're all going to have them put in a drive approach. But it's, other frontage improvements are not required.
David, I have a question right on that. If they're accessing from the alley, can we improve the alleyway, though?
No.
No.
No, that's considered the frontage, so they're.
To their.
They came from that, too. That's a great question. I like that. That's one that comes up. Another one that comes up are sidewalks, and this is a very nuanced issue. So you have a sidewalk and you have a cross slope. Typically, that's for drainage, right? It's typically 1% to 2%. That's the code. The Department of Justice says that the sidewalk has to be less, 2% or less, cross slope. So, you know, perpendicular to the sidewalk. We've had a lot of permits, well, not a lot. We've had some permits that have come in that trigger frontage improvements, and the only frontage improvement is that the sidewalk is just a little too steep on the cross slope. And so it's a perfectly good crosswalk, you know, it's, I'm sorry, sidewalk. Yeah, perfectly good sidewalk. What we're saying here is, what we're going to let is give an exemption for that because the city would still be on tap to do these upgrades in the future. But it's walkable and traversable now. There's no, I'd be really amazed if someone could tell me the difference between 2% and 3.5%. So we're going to have an exemption for that, just so people can do their projects and move their projects forward. Large residential lots, they're already in there. We're giving an automatic exemption to fire and natural disaster, and then any state law conflicts that come up in the future. The state, as you know, keeps passing housing laws, and so we just want to have a code section that just recognizes that and that we're going to comply with state law. Mr. Strong?
Yes, question on that specific. Some years ago, when I went for money to improve our alleys because I needed it desperately, the state told me we could not use any of their funds because alleys are not streets and are not eligible to use any street funds. So if we're going to have improvements, frontage improvements, how are we going to fund it? We can't use any of the state money.
So this is a public hearing. It's a great question. Let's get through the report, then we'll get back to council questions and follow our usual procedure. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that's the proposed code. That was just section one. So we have some other sections in there about timing, amounts. The building official will establish valuation in the current code, the trigger level, basically, or I'm sorry, the building official will establish the valuation of the construction and then be able to tell us in the engineering department, this project is subject to frontage improvements or it's not. You know, the engineering department, we can do really well at telling you how much a road costs, how much a curb and gutter and sidewalk costs, but really that that type of work really resides in the building department. So we're working together in this new code update to, you know, establish the valuation. City engineer, so city engineer will still establish the prioritization, what needs to be done, because not everything needs to be done at once, depending on the level of improvements. Postponement for parcel maps is clarified, so parcel maps, when they come in, that's a new lot being split to create four parcels or less, they can put off frontage improvements until they build their project. Now, they have to do financial assurances so that we can guarantee that that work gets done, but that this section is just now clarified, so it's very clear on who it applies to. Still have the waiver of requirements. The Planning Commission is retained as the hearing body. The city council, within the code, still has, people can still take the Planning Commission to the city council for appeal. And that also goes for my decisions. My decisions can go to the Planning Commission for appeal, and then they can also go to council. So if I decide something that the applicant doesn't like, they always have a remedy within the code. And also maintain street dedication. So sometimes people have to widen the street when they do their projects for bigger projects. This allows the city to get a dedication of right away from them when they do that project. Very important, if you widen the street, you want to make sure we have the ability to maintain that street. So my recommendation tonight is to introduce by first reading the ordinance. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. We will go to council questions now, then it's public comment, and then we'll make our comments. Let's start with Councilman Strong's line of question.
Okay. You heard my basic question. Why are we going to get them?
Why are we gonna get the money to do the improvements we want if we can't use any of the state funds?
You know, Councilman Strong, I'd have to get more information about that. Right now, I don't know of any restrictions on how we can use the gas tech funds and those kind of things. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know all the nuances of the funding of the state money, but certainly if we got a grant or something from the state, we, you know, unless it was restricted, we could use it to fix those alleys.
Yep, and, and my understanding is it's only street funds. If, it's a fund that's restricted to street improvements or something to do with streets, you can't use it for alleys. There aren't, that doesn't mean no, no funds can be used. I'm talking about those funds, which are usually, but we do it something like this.
Certainly, I, you know, I, we could, we could check into that.
Okay.
I, you know, from what I know, alleys are streets, but
Not by state law.
We could check on, we could check on that. They're, they're on, they're on our, the original 1883 subdivision map.
I agree.
Yeah.
That was my argument with them. I didn't win. Thank you.
But we can check into that. I mean, if
Other questions? Anyone?
Good.
Very good. Okay, we're going to open it up to the public. This is your opportunity to comment on this item. We invite you to come forward to the microphone, give us your name, and we'll give you three minutes, and we look forward to your input. Seeing no one rise, and I see no one in line, online, we're going to close public comment. Bring it back to the council for council discussion action, Mr. Gregory.
Yeah, David, could I have you come back up, So does this cover all public and private projects?
Yes.
Okay. So the, so what we're doing is we're raising the threshold, basically, where it starts up to 75,000, and then you're being a little more lenient on some of the items than we were before. Does it protect us enough for people to participate in improving the streets around their projects?
Yeah, so most of the bigger projects will come in over 75,000.
Yeah.
And they'll be subject to, to the code requirement. There's a whole, there's a whole range of valuations and improvements that can be done. Sometimes it's as simple as just a curb ramp for, you know, so we can get people off the street and not the sidewalk, see if they're in a wheelchair. Sometimes it's full-blown curb gutter sidewalk. It just really depends on the cost of the improvements, the valuation, and what needs to be done. And, you know, a lot of times, nothing needs to be done because we already have, we already have, you know, full-blown curb gutter sidewalk out there. Sometimes the whole thing has to be done. It just really depends. Sometimes we just have them plant a tree, you know, or, you know, fix, we all, a lot of times, we have them fix squares of sidewalk that are broken or uplifted, or have them take out a tree and do the same, fix the square. So it just really runs the gamut, but we will, I think, you know, in looking at the permits that were issued last year and the valuations, there were, the bigger projects were well beyond the 75,000 range. Really, that, that is, that, and then that number will be increased every year, too, by the building inflation numbers. So it's, it's gonna keep going up, and the idea is to keep those smaller projects out of the mix. Really, the, the ones we see are, you know, quality of life, really, someone's really trying to get something for their grandma or mom.
So this does not affect your calculation of what it costs for a larger project? This is only taking care of the slower projects?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Bausch.
So I started reading this with trepidation and thinking to myself, great, here goes Mr. Athie raising rates again. And I got to reading this, and I was very pleasantly surprised what, what a break this is for our residents. So thank you very much. There's a lot of thought went into this. It's too bad Mr. Jones isn't here to hear your comments and presentation. This is very much needed, and I'm glad to hear that it's going to be an ongoing review for inflation. I do have one question. We have people with projects already in the works. Is there going to be any kind of retroactive, or can people bring their projects back in for review that are already in the planning stages?
You know, certainly if there's a project that is smaller and, you know, is required to do frontage improvements under the 75,000 or meets one of the other exemptions, certainly we'll, we'll let them, we'll waive their requirement.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, going back to my question, David, about the, and it was more pointed toward the ADUs, which again are gonna be, you know, alley-loaded usually. So if it's over 75,000, does the ADA type of construction still have, so to speak, a discounted allowance for the alleyway improvements, so they don't have to do that still? Meaning that, you know, this, you're, I see what you're doing with the smaller projects, which is commendable, I think this is great. But again, it's the law of the ADUs now that have been taken out of our hands by state law
Right.
That says that they're not required to improve their frontage, even though, you know, it, it's gonna be needed.
Right.
Puts us on the back of all the other roles here. You see, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm trying to figure out how we can do that.
Yeah, I'm acutely aware of the, the ADU exemption, and yes, they would still be exempt even if they're over 75,000. ADU. The ADU law is very specific. It just says
Yeah, I know.
Cannot require
That was the problem with this state ordinance.
You know, I, I can't offer this, is that when they have, ADUs often take access off of like a paved alley. You know, a lot of them are paved, some of them are unpaved. With the ones that are paved, we oft, we have a strip of asphalt put in, we're not gonna, you know, they still gotta provide like a, a nice parking spot, and most of them do, they have like either pavers or concrete or, or asphalt on their side of the alley, and they connect to the alley itself. So we're not creating a situation where they're pulling off the alley in the dirt over the edge of the asphalt, and then, you know, as people have probably seen it, it breaks back over time because you're just running over that edge.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that still happens, and when they, when a, whether it's, whether it's a street frontage or an alley frontage, and a, and an ADU needs to cut in a new driveway, they're gonna have to put in a drive approach. So we're still gonna have that.
All right. So that's fine. I just, ADUs are kind of a tough one for all of us, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion whenever you finish with discussion.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
I was just gonna make a motion, but John can make it.
John, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion then to introduce for the first reading by title only, ordinance XXXX, modifying decimal code section 11 dot 12 dot 030, required frontage improvements, meaning curb, gutter, sidewalk, curb ramps, driveway aprons, street and alley paving, and repealing section 11 dot 40 dot 010, waiver of requirement.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Bausch. There's no further discussion. Mr. Gregory?
I'd just like to make a very positive comment about this to help people with their projects and being able to fix up their homes, and it's a very nice, very nice ordinance. Thank you for bringing
I was gonna make the same comment in speaking to the concern that was expressed earlier this evening, I think, raising the, the trigger level here on the cost of improvements, streamlining the permit process and the list of exemptions that are being provided, give a real, a real boost to the, the small developments, the infill developments that'll provide more affordable housing in the city, so I really favor that. Mr. Strong?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll ditto those comments with my vote.
Very good. Is there no further discussion? Call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We move on to item number 13, request to amend the general plan, specific plan designation, zoning designation, and conditional use permit to allow the expansion of a storage yard accessory to Passerables Tank at 727 and 1/2 26th Street. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. My name is Katie Bannister, Assistant Planner. So as you said, this is a, a request to make some amendments to allow the Passerables Tank facility to expand. It's a long list of applications for a pretty minor expansion of the, of the facility moving to the map. So here is the existing Passerables Tank facility. This is off of 26th Street to the east of Spring. The proposed site, oh, so first, there is a large elevation change between the main part of the facility, kind of down near the railroad, and then the green arrows are meant to indicate a downslope, and then the area to the, to the left of those arrows is up at a higher, about 20 feet higher than the, the main facility. The property that's proposed for zone change and a general plan amendment and so forth is here now in red. This property is accessed by an alley. There's no access to this lot via a street other than through this alley. There are a number of residential properties, one at the end of the alley to the north of the, the proposed site, and then there's some existing or remaining residences along Spring Street, and then to the south of 26th Street, including where the Moose Lodge is being replaced by a mixed-use project that includes some residential units. So here's a look at 26th Street. On the right, you see kind of the main facility, and then on the left is that upper kind of elevation area. The alley that we saw is there with that orange arrow, so that's the alley traveling back to where the site that is proposed to, to have its zoning changed to allow that new storage yard is located. So here's a look at the house that would be removed. This is a house that has been vacant for about 10 years. It's in some pretty poor repair. The, there are some housing laws within the state of California that require, of course, the city just to make properties zoned in order to meet our housing allocation needs. This site is not included on our, our kind of allocated sites that are specifically designed for housing, and in point of fact, changing the zoning from T4F to the Riverside Corridor zoning district would actually not decrease the, the residential capacity. The Riverside Corridor is also a mixed-use zone, and so this property could theoretically in the future be used for residential uses, however, that's not how the applicant intends to use it. So this is the existing site plan. You can see the different facilities that the, the applicant has on the site. In the red is where that single-family residence that we just saw would be removed, and here's that slope again. So when we move to the next slide, we're really gonna be looking at that kind of uphill area. As you can see, there is a single-family residence that's existing, they have a tenant that lives there, right there on 26th Street, and then there's a fabrication shop in that single-family residence. So moving to the next slide, so here's that same blue area. So on the left, we're looking at what's existing, and then on the right is what is proposed. On the left, you can see that single-family residence to be removed, and then there's a lot of C-trains and other storage towards the rear of that lot. There's some fencing that will all be removed. So when we look now to the proposed, the proposed site plan, those C-trains all get moved over to the rear of the lot, and then it makes room for a product lay-down and material lay-down yard, so it provides for more storage for Passerables Tank. It's really an extension of what they're already doing on the site, just gives them more room. Unfortunately, the T4F zoning dis, zoning district does not allow for that type of use, and so that's why we're here tonight to, to make these changes. In addition, the, the, the applications that you are considering this evening include a conditional use permit, and one of the requirements would be to do frontage improvements along the front of, along 26th Street, and there would also be some new landscaping installed along, along that frontage. So as I said, there are a lot of applications included tonight. The first is a general plan amendment that would change the general plan designation from mixed-use to industrial. In addition, the site would be rezoned, which is also a specific plan amendment, because this is part of the Uptown Town Center specific plan, so the zoning would be changed from T4F to the Riverside Corridor zoning district. And the Riverside Corridor zoning district is a very diverse zoning district, allows residential all the way up to manufacturing-type uses. In addition, there's a conditional use permit amendment, which is required because outdoor storages, outdoor storages, outdoor storage uses are conditionally allowed if there are not public improvements completely installed, and so this conditional use permit will remedy the, the lack of frontage improvements there. So there are four actions that the city council would need to take this evening in order to approve the project. The project is not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and so staff did circulate a negative declaration between August 24th and September 13th. No mitigation measures are proposed, but we had to go through that exercise to make sure it complied with the California Environmental Quality Act. So the first resolution would be to certify that negative declaration. The second resolution would be to change the general plan designation, as I said, from mixed-use 12, you can see along Spring Street on both sides, that's where the mixed-use 12 land use designation exists, and then to the east of that, you see the M, general plan designation, and so we would change that lot that's there in red from the MU12 to the M or industrial zoning, just, excuse me, industrial land use designation. The third, the third action would be to adopt an ordinance to change the zoning of, of the lot. So in addition to its general plan designation, it does have zoning, so this would be to change from the T4F to the Riverside Corridor zoning district. The fourth action would be the, the, the third resolution, which is the conditional use permit amendment. Passerables Tank has, has been on the site for many years and is operated under some conditional use permits that are listed in your staff report. All the old conditions would remain in effect, but some additional conditions have been added. One would be to provide screening along the, the alley. Currently, the existing Passerables facility does have the, the chain link with slats that, that screens the facility, but that new site doesn't have the slats in there, in the chain link, so that would need to be added. As I said before, landscaping along the 26th Street frontage would be required in addition to the frontage improvements you see there in number 17. There is a requirement that typical circulation not come from the alley. The alley's not really built for heavy trucks and, and a lot of traffic, and so Passerables Tank will need to operate by coming off of 26th Street and then circulating within their, their facility and only using that alley in kind of unusual, unusual circumstances. And then the secret document, the environmental document was written, assuming that only storage would occur on the, on the new site, the 727 and 1/2 26th Street, and so that would be a requirement that that site just be used for storage to supil, to support the Passerables Tank facility. So as always, the, the city council has options. The first would be to take no option, take no action. You could approve the project. You could also amend the, the conditions of approval for the project, which would be option three. If you feel you need more information, that could be referred back to the Planning Commission or to staff, and then if the city council would like to deny the, the, the project, you would need to make findings of denial. So staff is recommending that you approve the project, and to do so, you would need to adopt the, the four different resolution and ordinances in, in the staff report. The first would be Resolution A to certify the negative declaration. The second is Resolution B, approving that general plan amendment. The third action would be to introduce for first reading the draft ordinance, and fourthly would be to approve the resolution approving the amendment to conditional use, excuse me, to the, the conditional use permit. That does conclude staff's report, and I did steal this picture from Passerables Tank's website.
Thank you very much for that report. Are there any council questions? Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, Katie, on the residents on the very north end of this, north of the project, is there any effect to them at all?
Other than there will be this storage yard closer to them, they did receive notices of all the hearings that we've had and have not had any response. My understanding is the applicant is in contact with them. My understanding is the applicant likes his isolation and so is not concerned, but certainly has the opportunity to speak this evening as well.
So their access, access will remain the same?
That's right. The alley would not be impacted, and, and really, Passerables Tank is not supposed to be using the alley for their main access.
And then I have a general, general amendment question. Are we limited to the number, number of general plan amendments we could do in a year still?
Yes, we can make four general plan amendments in a
What number is this?
I believe this is the first. I don't think we've done any this year.
Oh, we got plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Bausch?
So I, more of an observation. Great report. I think it's, it's a good idea, but on slide number four, it looks like there might have been an oak tree on the southwest corner.
Animation. I'm sorry, so the question is about that oak tree? So the, the conditional use permit is conditioned so that the applicant comply with the oak tree ordinance. They are not proposing to remove any trees. They do show that, you know, there will be some activity around them, but not grading, they're not gonna be changing the grade back there, they're not doing any paving.
That is, probably isn't part of this tonight. That'll come later in the
They, they, as far as, as staff is aware, they're not proposing any changes that would require city council action or staff action on oak trees.
Perfect.
Yeah, they intend to maintain the oak trees. Yeah, they intend to maintain the oak trees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
Yeah, Katie. That one slide there showing, I guess, the plot plan of how they're going to use the property with the C-trains to the north end. Can you bring that up? It looks like there is, yeah, look at how, is there going to have a slide gate up there for access to the alleyway if they want to use it?
There is. The, the notations are really small and I didn't highlight that one. But yes, they do still show a, a gate there. As I said, the conditional use permit is written so that most of their, their access needs to come from 26th. But yes, there is an alley that would allow them to use that, the alley. There's a gate that would allow them to use the alley when needed.
And so they're moving the C-trains to the north end of the property line. Are they going to use that open area then for fabrication area? And I guess what I'm kind of getting, lay down area, yeah, material lay down. So in other words, noise. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, is there going to be a heck of a lot more noise up there now after this has changed? Did they mention anything about that?
I think, you know, the, so the C-trains will provide some buffering, you know, and a kind of a wall for, for that residence that's to the north. I don't believe that the anticipation is that this is going to increase their, you know, manufacturing capacity. It's giving them more space for storage primarily. I'm, I'm sure there will be some noise, but I don't think it's, you know, extremely, it's not the loudest part of their facility.
Right. They already have a small fabrication shop there too, which is already making, I'm sure some sort of, okay, that's all I had.
Any other council questions? Very good. Thank you very much. We'll open it to the public. This is your opportunity to comment. We invite you to come forward. Seeing no one rise, I see no one in line online. I will close public comment, bring it back to the council. Mr. Gregory.
I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's any more discussion.
Forward and upward.
Okay. Katie, you have to give us these long ones. Make sure I say it all. So I move, we approve draft resolution A certifying, certifying negative declaration FCH 2022 080525, attachment six.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Bow. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
I move, we approve draft resolution B, general plan amendment 21 dash 01, to change the land use designation for 727 and a half 26th Street from mixed use MU dash 12 to industrial M, attachment seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Bow. There's no further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to introduce for the first reading a draft ordinance XXX, attachment eight, approving the rezone 21 dash 02 and specific plan amendment 22 dash 01 to rezone the property at 27, excuse me, 727 and a half 26th Street from T4F to Riverside Corridor RSC.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Bow. No further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
And finally, I move to approve the draft resolution C, attachment nine, amendment 22 dash 01, to conditional use permit 83 dash 019, to expand the Passerables Tank facility.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Bow. No further discussion. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bow?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Move now to discussion items. Item number 14 is the quarterly financial report. Mr. Cornell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director for the city. Tonight I have the opportunity to present to you the, our first quarterly financial update for fiscal year 2223. However, because we are still only four months into the new fiscal year, most of the emphasis will be looking back at the prior fiscal year 2122 and seeing those final results. I will kind of touch base on some of the 2223 activity and just kind of making sure our budget assumptions that we use were, are still on point. And then in addition to the kind of the fiscal numbers that I'm going to present, I'm also going to provide an update on the organizational restructure of, of the city where we kind of split some resources and some departments and whatnot. So we have some status updates to share with you there. So the first graph here is just the general fund revenues over the past 10 years. So just going kind of left to right here, our, our revenues were kind of hovering right around 35 million per year. And then in 1617, we exceeded the $40 million marker. But then, I mean, really ever since 1617, we've seen some, some pretty significant revenue growth year over year. But more, kind of more recently, from fiscal year 2019 to 20, 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we did see our revenues decrease, but then we did see a nice rebound since then. Both a 2% increase year over year from 2122 and then again from, I'm sorry, a 2% increase from 2122, from 2020 to 21 to 2122. My notes are a little backwards on, on that one. But then we're kind of projecting even in the fiscal year 23 only a slight, kind of more leveling off of, of the city revenues. Kind of one of the main reasons for fiscal year 22's revenues to be slow low, because if you look at the projected revenues back from when we did the budget assumption, they are a little bit lower. We had a fair market value adjustment on our investments. And so the government accounting standards board, GASB, requires the city to report its cash in investments at its fair market value. At June 30th, the LAIF, the local agency investment fund that the city holds a lot of its investments into the state, had a 98.1% fair market value adjustment. So essentially there was a kind of a accounting entry made to lower our investments down by essentially four and a half million dollars. The general fund was kind of about a million and a half of that proportionate share of that. So it did make it look like our revenues came in lower. Really, the fair market value adjustment is just a kind of a paper transaction. Had we sold all of our investments on June 30th, yeah, we probably would have gone four and a half million dollars less, but we don't do that. We hold our, our investments to maturity. And so there's really no risk at losing that value. It's just kind of a paper at June 30th entry that has to be made. But it does show that the revenues kind of stay flat for that year. But when we kind of look in, in the, again, a little bit deeper on the, on the revenue sides, you know, what was positive? So this graph is the Bradley Burn sales tax. It's just a 1% sales tax. I have a little bit more of a history here leading up to it. And so when we kind of get into 1516, 1617, a couple of things happened in those years. One, the state ended its triple flip sales tax where they reduced the city's sales tax amounts and then increased property tax values. So that went away. So we're actually now recalibrating to what we're supposed to be receiving, both on the sales tax and property taxes. And in addition to that, measure E12 was kind of played in the mix as well. So we saw some, some good revenue growth there. Now, again, kind of jumping a more, we're to kind of the, the right hand side, we've kind of seen some, some significant increases year over year. 17.8% coming out of the pandemic in, in 2021. And then another 11 and a half percent of this list passed year. And so what we do know is that those double digit increases year over year aren't sustainable. And so really moving forward, we're kind of projecting our sales tax revenues to be flat. That was the assumption used during the budget process. And then actually, if we, because we consult with HCL, they actually provide us monthly revenue projections. And so on the left hand side for July and August, we were projecting to get about 930,400 each month from sales tax. The actual results are right there in the next column over, a little more than a million dollars. So really for the first two months, on the Bradley Burn side, we're kind of showing revenues coming in 300,000 more than expected. Carrying that fall, all the way through the E12 and J20, overall, we're looking at about 669,000 more in revenue just in the first two months of the fiscal year than had anticipated. Equates to roughly about 2.4% more. Moving on to property taxes, this is probably a, a broken record that I sound like because Prop 13 really limits revenue growth when you're property taxes. And so we tend to kind of see this kind of very, very slow growth year over year. More recently, we've kind of seen a 4% growth. So that's actually more significant. I kind of attribute that to kind of a little bit more of a turnover in the housing market more recently. And then even in the future, when we start seeing Olson, South Chandler and the Beachwood residential developments, we'll really kind of start seeing those revenue growths occur at that point in time. But for now, we are meeting expectations. I got updated information from the county on property tax valuations that resulted in 80,000 more in, in revenue than anticipated. So we're right on, on target with property taxes for, for this year. And then lastly is transient occupancy taxes. This graph is a little bit different here. Each one of the lines represents a different fiscal year and it's kind of accumulated revenues over, over the year. And so what, what I find interesting, and I kind of highlighted the last three fiscal years for, for council, and in 2019, 20, that was when COVID-19 hit. And so we know in April, May, and June, the TOT revenues pretty much went to zero. And you can kind of see hidden in that graph, that, that line went pretty much flat. But, but since 1920, the TOT has increased 40% from 1920 to 2021 and another 38% just this last year. So it is quite robust and, and tourism industry is doing quite well. One thing that I do want to note, and this is kind of the, the first signs of, of slowdown. When we look month over month over the TOT, July was, was, was a good month. I think the, the State Fair had some good tourism activity that, that kind of bounced back from, from 2021. However, just looking at August rents, those are coming in about 4.3% just year over year. So when we look at things in, you know, so far accumulated total, we're kind of flat right now. And then taking it even a step backwards of what we projected for the end of 2223, they were under projected to start with because we didn't think, I think at the time we were thinking TOT would come in about 8 million. And the actuality came in about 9.8 million. So significant increase that we weren't even anticipating in that last quarter of the last fiscal year. So our 2223 estimates were already off to start with. So at the end of the year, if you kind of project out, we're looking about 300,000 more than when we were originally anticipating. So at the end of the day, we're looking about revenues exceeding about 2 to 3%. Equates to about 1.4 million. But really, I'm kind of starting to see these, these revenues start leveling off, not decline, but just start kind of slowing down and leveling off. Moving on to expenditures, the general fund that's left this past fiscal year incurred costs of 49.9 million dollars. It represents 98.8% of budget appropriations. And so that's actually getting really, really close to 100%. Typically, we, historically, this, the city has landed right around 90, 92% of appropriations. And there's kind of two, two main reasons for the amount of appropriations being spent. The first one has to do with measure J20. When we passed measure J20, it was to supplement the general fund. It wasn't to supplant the general fund. And so when we started adding new police officer positions, new firefighter positions, we created a new fund and, and put those employees in that standalone J20 fund. Now, whenever there's a general funded employee, police officer firefighter that leaves the organization, we replace that general fund employee with a J20 employee. So usually, or historically, where we had savings in the general fund, aren't being recognized now. They're being recognized in the measure J20 fund now. So it does show a little bit, if we kind of myopic on just the general fund, it does show that we're, we're spending more, more of our appropriations than in historically past. But that's because we're shifting more cost to the general fund and kind of showing that savings in measure J20. The other reason for us approaching the appropriations limit has to do with a $500,000 adjustment related to our workers' comp insurance program. Before even CJPA, the city was, was involved in, in a pool program for, for workers' comp. And they estimate what their claims that they're going to have to pay out are in the future. And so as of today, our, the assets that we have held with them and the estimated claims is a positive. So we actually have an asset there. We recently created an internal service fund to account for all of our risk management activity. And so what we want to do is take that, those funds out of the general fund and move them to that new risk management fund. And so it kind of shows an expense out of the general fund and the revenue into the internal service, just so that we could keep all of our risk related items under one, one fund. So, but outside of that, the vast majority of our expenses go to public safety and our projects. And that's a little bit more than half. Something that's new this year than it has been in the, in the past is these internal service funds, like I just mentioned, the risk. We, we established three new funds, the risk management fund, the information technology and the fleet. And the, the reason is, is because the water fund, the general fund, the wastewater fund, they all benefit from fleet. They all benefit from IT. So it's actually a better accounting mechanism to know citywide what these costs really are from to run these programs. And then on the right hand side is more of the objects. Obviously, we are servicing organizations. So the, the salary benefits that we pay our employees, it tends to be the, a higher expense for the general fund. A little bit detail on our supplemental sales tax. Like I had mentioned, measure E12 is our half cent supplemental sales tax. That was approved by voters in 2012. It's our main funding source for roads and road and street projects. And since it's an approval in 2012, the city has spent 40.7 million on roads, of which we were able to kind of leverage on 8020 split between other funding sources such as grants, state, federal and some other local grants. Today, yeah, as we work today, we have 47.7 million appropriated towards projects. And right now, I think Adidas is working on the country club of Apollusa and the kind of the Melody neighborhoods. But we're right on, so the next street segments up are the 17th Street, the Sierra Anita kind of area, Riverside and then Preston Road, which we kind of mentioned earlier with the grant things that we've done there. So that's on the, on the horizon. But I do want to put a caveat, this, E12 has an automatic sunset in 2024. And so if we don't have another tax measure that gets renewed in the next election cycle, this, the city's general fund is poised to lose right around $7 million in annual revenue. On the flip side, measure J20, that's our one cent supplemental sales tax that has a road entry component as well as public safety. Fiscal year 2020, 2122 is the first year that we received a full application of sales tax. It actually totaled 13.1 million dollars this year, about 2.7 million more than what was anticipated. The other revenues that's, that's shown up there is both the combination of that interest revenue. You're going to see that interest revenue negative throughout all of the funds. And then as well as the safer grant, the second one that we received to get our firefighters on, on board. But as you can see on, down on the, on the expense side of things, it's, it's been kind of a slow start to, to get our, our people on, on board. At the end of the year, we're, we're looking right around 33% of the budget appropriations being stacked. Specifically, when it comes to police officers, we continue to struggle of recruiting those. Out of the 14 authorized J20 positions, we have two that are filled those spots. We have one that's currently in the academy that's going to graduate in January time. Two that are slated or in background to go to start the January academy, which will be graduating in June time. And then we currently have one lateral that's in its backgrounds, working its way through its process. So, you know, we're, we're trying to make progress towards it. It's low going. We also have been in, in communication with a, a marketing firm to try to help with our marketing efforts to make sure that we're capturing all potential laterals that we possibly can. So that's coming up shortly. For firefighters, we've actually are fully staffed on, on firefighters. But for J20, we did get authorization for two additional positions, a deputy fire chief and a fire prevention specialist position. I'm happy to, to announce, I don't know if, if you have a chance to congratulate Randy Harris, but Randy Harris has been recently promoted to the deputy fire chief, which only creates another recruitment because we have to recruit for a fire marshal now. And so it's kind of a one step forward, one step backwards on, on the fire department. But firefighters and, and line level staff are, are on board and fully operational. And then as far as the street maintenance personnel, we recently lost a couple of those maintenance staff. maintenance personnel, we recently lost a couple of those maintenance staff. Again, the J20 positions fell funnel over the general fund. And so now we're filling those J20 positions. And I believe the recruitment wrapped up last week. So hopefully we'll get some new bodies in on the street group here shortly. And then lastly, when it comes to projects, there were three projects that were approved with J20. That's the substation at Second One Way. On a dollar perspective, we spent about 144,000 there, about 50% through design. Fire station number three around Union Road, we've extended $1.7 million so far in 2122. That's about 25% of the overall budget. And then about 50% of the street projects, about 1.1 million of J20s gone to there. I advanced my slides. Skip that one. Okay, so on the organizational restructure, as we discussed throughout the budget process, staff proposed a pretty significant impact. It touched the city manager's office, it touched administrative services, public works, community services. Kind of the biggest piece of it was creating that new utilities department into break away from public works. So today, it's I'm happy to inform that information technology division is officially a part of admin services. The utilities department has been created and Christopher is now the new director there. Both directors, public works and community services have been appointed. The two landscape maintenance crews have been identified. So now we're going to have a landscape maintenance crew that's dedicated to street trees and medians in the landscape and lighting district. And we're going to have another crew that's going to be dedicated solely to parks and trails. And so we identified who those individuals are and they've been informed. So really, actually, I think on Monday, we were running with two separate crews now moving forward. And then lastly, there was some meeting confer obligations that the city has met with the union and we've met with those requirements. So really, moving forward, we're kind of having internal discussions on budgets. One thing you'll kind of notice in the 2223 forecast, public works might show over budget, over expended in projections, but then community services showing is under expended. That's because we're still fine tuning where some of these costs are going to land and in which department. Frida and Helica's group are going over their equipment and supplies needs, listing, we have a budget there. And so they're making sure that the crews can work independently of one another. And then really, the focus is just to make sure that we're fully staffed in those operations. And so that's kind of the next steps there. But there are some proposed changes when we kind of went down this reorg, when we didn't have all the answers and we knew there was going to be some fine tuning to be had. And so on the utility side, we got authorizations for three new positions, a utilities operations manager, recycled water manager, and it's all waste coordinator. So the first one, we're not really needing to do anything. We're going to just do a simple title change on that one. But for the next two, we actually want to do a couple of things. One, we want to reclass the positions up to a higher classification. And then we also want to front load them in the first year of the budget instead of the second year. Really, the recycled water manager, when we're kind of looking at the scopes and roles and responsibilities, we kind of pegged them and put them more in a line with the water manager and the wastewater manager. And so that this recycled water manager will be kind of in that same kind of classification description area. Similarly, the solid waste coordinator with the components of SB 1383 and the nuances there, we are proposing to upgrade that position from coordinator position to a manager position. That manager would be something similar to Patty, like in our flood program or stormwater program. And then lastly, another request based on the residential development going on the east side of town, they're moving specifically also in South Chandler, they're moving much, much faster than we anticipated at the beginning of the year. And so we're requesting that a community development engineering inspector that was slated for the second year of the budget be advanced forward to the first year as well. And that's just really to meet the demand of the residential development. So that's the end of my presentation tonight, Mr. Mayor. However, before we conclude in this kind of dovetail or ducktails into a little bit of the discussion earlier, this this meeting, I did have a chance at the last council meeting or to re-listen to the last council meeting and to listen to the comments that Mr. Carr had made. And in reflection of that, I agree with most of what he says. I do think that municipal government should be open and transparent, and that information should be made available. And so the challenge that I that I have is, and I did this too, right, we have 7,793 active GL accounts in our accounting software. And so, you know, I do look at that as, I can't go over every single line item, line by line. But I do try to summarize, I try to get the bigger pieces and get clearly what the overall direction of the city is. But with any report, if the city council wants additional information or provide different additional direction, that's always part of the recommendation on these quarterly reports. With that, Mr. Mayor, I have to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Council questions? Mr. Strong?
Yes, Ryan, mostly for the benefit of the public who doesn't understand the silos of local government. We are a full-service government. But can you explain the difference between enterprise funds and the general fund and the restrictions upon them, income and outgo?
So there are different fund types. So just a fund in itself is like a business within the business. So I like to think that the city's in the in the water business, it's also in the wastewater business. And then you have this general fund, which is in the business of police, firefighters, street roads and mains and the like. Each one of those funds have to have standalone essentially financial statements. I have, we have to balance them, assets, liabilities and equities all in each one of those funds. The enterprise funds get titled based on what their typical revenue source is. And so for the water fund, the typical revenue source for them is the charges to be billed to our utility billing customers. So because those are the main drivers of the rubber, that's what qualifies as an enterprise fund. We can't kill mingle funds. And so if you have general funds or segregated from water funds or segregated from wastewater funds because each one of those have different restrictions. Just one last little point too, a lot of times when the state provides the city with money, have it be SB 1090 or some of the economic development money, a lot of those times those have restrictions on it too. And so we'll create standalone funds just for those special state funding sources so that the revenue goes into one fund and the expenses go out of that same fund. And so you know where and how those monies are being spent.
And there are two things I didn't see in the report at all. We should put comment on the airport and the landfill.
The airport and the landfill. So, so, I mean, they're not part of the report. I'm happy to report that as of the end of the year, there's really not a whole lot of changes in the activity at the airport or the landfill for that for that matter.
That's the point. But they're both enterprise funds, are they not?
Those are both enterprise funds.
Yes. So if there's no significant change, expenditures are income during the year, no reason to report.
Right. And in all honesty, too, the water and wastewater rate studies that we do every five years, though, that's the deep dive into the financials of those enterprise funds. And really, we're making decisions on how to pay for those costs in the future.
Thank you. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, Ryan, so for 2021, 22, you had an adopted budget and we ended up about 112% above our estimated income at the end of the year, correct? So are you starting to adjust your accounting for this year since you're starting to see a level off for this next coming year?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not recommending changing any of the budget assumptions for this current year that we're in. It seems that we're a little hot or a little bit better than expected. But I think that's because our anticipation that we'll probably level off. And at the end of the year, we might be right where we wanted to or what we were projecting to be.
And did you take into account what this county tax collector is doing to us this year? Adjusting for all the years of lowering the tax dollars and now reassessments, reassessment, everything back in this year? Did you know they're doing?
I hadn't heard that. The information I received from the county tax assessor was from like end of August time. So I'm not quite familiar with the impacts that you're referring to.
Yeah. So the theory behind it is that they lowered the property tax when we were going the down years. And now we're going back to normal and they're going to catch up everything they lost. So like on a, my tax bill was up $1,500 this year, for example.
Okay. So with Prop 13, right, it limits the maximum tax growth year over year. But when those instances where evaluations do drop down, we don't continue to get the grow, right? We actually have to drop that down all the way down to wherever the valuation is. Now, we're able to increase property taxes greater than the 2% as long as we're under that initial base of 2%, right? So the house gets bought and then we just do a line over 2%. So we could improve the tax more than 2% as long as we're under that main line. And so that's the 2% not property limitation.
So you're predicting your assumptions are pretty good for this year then?
So, so, yeah, we do take into consideration those real loss captures because of property.
Councilman Hammond?
I think you were saying 4.1 is what you're looking for increase this year over last with regard to that. Ryan, can you pull up that J20 PowerPoint slide? That I want to kind of get into that a little bit. Yeah. I need to get educated on how we can, I'm looking at street maintenance, right? And I want to know how we can program more of the reserves down at the bottom into that portion of it until we need it. In other words, you know, we've allocated for a place in fire, but the streets, especially on the west side of town, need help. I'm trying to figure out, we had this conversation with Tyler a while ago, and trying to figure out how we might be able to bring this up and reprogram or plan some reserves that are coming in on J20 and get them end up working mode.
Yeah, I think the better perspective is actually to look at the street program overall and kind of look at our planning for it. Because J20 is just kind of a minor piece of the overall pie when it comes to street program. It's actually E12 that does the bulk of the funding for our street program. But you're absolutely right, we do have $10 million in reserves in J20 that can be used.
At least start getting programmed, get discussion about how we can get it working.
And we do have $2.5 million worth of projects in this current year that's going to draw down that 10 million. But yet not, not all of it.
Yeah. Again, while everybody voted for J20 for those three reasons, and we need to show them that we're using. I mean, clearly, we're doing well on police and fire, or at least we're trying to on police. But the streets, again, with the one dropping off here in a couple of years, we need to plan ahead and then start making it work. So if we can bring that up on discussions, what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. And I do believe that's going to be part of the strategy, too. If we are going to, if the council's desire is to renew the tax measure, we should provide some sort of list or some sort of plan to the community of what we're planning on doing in the next round.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Strong?
I'm going to piggyback on both of the previous comments. First, on Councilman Hammond, you've got this big reserve, but we've got a couple of really large expense projects coming up next year. Are some of those reserves actually being held to help with those, like commerce, which is a multimillion dollar project?
Correct. So for 2223, the fiscal year we're in now, I do know J20 is going to deplete reserves by about $2.5 million to be funded towards the street program to supplement the shortfall from there. On the general fund side, I believe the drawdown, well, the drawdown was to 35% of reserves. And we're a little more than 50% today or at June 30. And so there's some healthy designated capital projects of kind of the general fund as well.
Is a portion of that being held for the local match required for grants that we anticipate getting as well?
Correct.
So if we don't have it and don't have the match, we lose the grant?
Correct. And yes, and we were very conscientious of the matching requirements. And actually, when we even do the budgets, it is a little ironic in that we're getting authorization for this project to be budgeted, but it's on the caveat that we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, the project doesn't go away. But for for planning purposes, we show both the grant and the city local match and the project in totality.
And then picking up on the on the property tax, to tell our public now that, oh, we're anticipating a huge increase next year in the property tax, I don't think our public understands that we don't get all that property tax. What percentage of that property tax do we actually get?
It's somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% of the 1%.
And that's, I think, what our public needs to know, too. Most of our property taxes do not come to us. They go to other people.
Yeah, the vast majority of property taxes go to the school districts.
Other council questions?
Yeah. With regard to the country club improvement, we brought that money in from reserves, didn't we, I believe? Or was it general fund money?
It was an advancement of E12 money.
It was what?
An advancement of E12. So we use the E12s in the future revenues to advance it. But yeah, there is kind of a bridge cash flow.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions from council?
Thank you very much. We'll open to the public. This is your opportunity to comment. We invite you to come forward.
Dale Guston, I am real pleased with the report. Of course, the one area I've always been ashamed of was what we did with the parking fund. And I hope we can correct that someday.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Michael Rivera, 928 Walnut Drive, Pass Robles. Just a couple of things. On the pie charts, I was wondering if the finance director, Mr. Cormar, by the way, did a great report, could put on those pie charts the actual amount of dollars designated each one of those pie charts. For the average citizen, it makes sense because it can look at the pie chart and then see what's designated for each. I just think it's a simpler, more user-friendly thing to do for the public. Secondly, you talked about the issue with police. Well, the bottom line is you're competing with our current salary structure and the fact that police officers are looking at what it costs to live here. And so they're saying, I'm going to uproot my family, come here, and I can't afford to even buy a house or even rent a house because it's so expensive. One of the other comments earlier today was the fact that you're paying $3,000 a month for a two-bedroom apartment in some situations, $2,800 a month. I talk to people all the time. It's a challenge. And I know what the average cost of, or the average income is for people in the city of Pass Robles. It's a big challenge. It's tough. And we have to address that. As it relates to the police, though, if we're going to recruit police officers here, we're going to have to offer some incentives to get them here. And we're talking about police officers that may come from Salinas, they may come from the Central Valley, they may come from Santa Maria, they may come from Southern California, they may come from Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I don't know. But we have to, we have to make an outreach. Thank you, Fred. Thank you for laughing. That's good. But we need to start making outreach everywhere in this state and country. We need police officers here. You know, I've been paying attention the last couple of weeks. I can assure you, our police officers are in tremendous, under tremendous stress. They're, they're having difficult times. Half of their calls, I think, or maybe the police chief can, can, can talk about this, are from the homeless situation. People throwing rocks at cars, people doing all kinds of crazy stuff out there. People sleeping in parks, people yelling at each other, yelling at our public, yelling at our guests. It's a problem that has to be addressed. And we got to take a tough love approach to this because this is getting out of hand. And we can't, this cancer's got to stop. And our police department's the main direct approach to beginning to get a handle on this. I want to thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Yeah. Hi, Jeff Carr, Pass Robles. Yes, a very good report. Just one question. Well, a couple. I mean, the charts are really good. I guess in general, on most of these presentations, we get the staff reports and then we get a separate set of charts. But I never find out what happens to those charts at the end. And I guess I can make a request individually for the charts I want. But I think a lot of these charts, it'd be nice if we had a way to get them afterwards. But also, I was mentioned in the in the report, the downtown parking fund was just had a little interesting thing that says the first year fiscal year 2021, 22, the last quarter, the first time, the program received more revenues than expended. And so that the loan was, was not as badly increased as before. So as maybe as expected. But I was also curious, because I thought the last time when we, they were talking about this, when the rates were not increased and the timing wasn't changed, that it was basically never going to, you know, have revenues higher than it, than its expenses. So I'm curious now, well, what happens to this loan? Does it still stay on the books as a loan? Does it continue as a loan? Or we just keep monitoring that as such? And, and I guess what did happen in the last quarter of the fiscal year that gave you those increased revenues? So just a little, some curiosities of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I'm not seeing anyone in line online. Going to close a public comment, bring it back to the council. First of all, some questions. Mr. Cornell, the question about adding dollar signs to those pie charts?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff report has several attachments and financial statements that do provide the actual dollar amounts. For presentation purposes, I do find it a little bit easier to talk to the pie charts, but I don't mind providing more context of some of those slides.
Good. And then the question about where these charts go. If I want to, if I'm in the public and I want to see them tomorrow, where do I go to get them?
So interestingly, in, right now, the city's website and the administrative services webpages, there's a section called financial reports. And then we kind of break it down fiscal year by fiscal year and quarter by quarter. And that provides the council staff reports, it provides actually the link and not only the link, but the time and place of the presentation as well on the YouTube channel. And so you could almost pretty much revisit the whole presentation there. Now, yeah, the actual slides aren't posted on the website. And so, yeah, usually those ones are have to be requested, but they kind of are available on the YouTube channel.
Okay. So if I understand the answer, people can always go back and watch this meeting on YouTube and see the charts. Of course, there's the question about adding the dollar signs, which we'll have to do in the future. Is it possible to publish these charts on the city's website so people can at their leisure download them? That would be great. And then the questions about parking revenues and I believe if I understand the questions correctly, the nature of the deficit currently existing in the operational funds for the parking district, is that an ongoing city expense that is considered an increasing loan? How are we dealing with that?
Sure. So it is the staff's intention to bring the parking program in its entirety and to the city council in the next couple of meetings. However, the last quarter four of fiscal year 2122, the main reason why revenues exceeded expenses was because of enforcement.
Okay. So increased enforcement meant that that?
So increased enforcement led to more tickets, which led to more ticker revenues.
Okay.
And so the overall loan from one year to the, or from last year to this year, I believe increased by about 20,000 or 40,000 is very slight. So I believe the loan balance is right around 640,000, which council authorized up to $1 million of an interfund loan.
So I'm sure this will be a part of the discussion in the future. But if increased enforcement is the reason for revenue increases, you would expect that to continue in the future, then would you?
I would not expect that to continue in the future because honestly, I think we want to get 100% compliance and not have to do enforcement.
Okay. And then as far as the nature of the deficit, we're going to talk about how that's going to be defined and declaimed. that's going to be defined and declared in the future?
Right. Correct. As the way it currently stands, if there's any positive cash flow out of the parking fund, it goes to the back to the general fund to pay down that loan until it's completely debased.
But you say use the word loan. Is it considered a loan still? And will it be continued?
As of right now, it is still considered a general fund loan to the parking fund. Yes.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much. Council comments, discussion, action. Mr. Strong.
Well, I do want to apologize for laughing. But example used by the gentleman was a city that my ancestors found in the late 18th century. So it was amusing.
Mr. Hammond?
It's just a receiving file. So I'd like to make a motion to receive a file. And also approve resolution 22 triple X amending the authorized positions listing in 2022 and '23 and revise master pay schedule.
Second. So if you would, John, can we do it two separate marks?
Two separate ones?
Yeah. And so receive a file. Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
And Mr. Mayor, go ahead and approve of resolution 22 triple X amending the authorized positions listing in fiscal year '22 and '23 and the revised master pay schedule.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item number 15, rescinding resolutions. Excuse me, Mr. Gregory.
Take a five-minute break, sir.
Okay. I've got a request for a five-minute break. We'll be back in a minute. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order and proceed with our agenda. We are at item number 15, rescinding resolution 16 dash 141, approving an agreement with the 16th District Agricultural Association for the sale of a portion of Pioneer Park property. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, as council requested approximately three months ago, we're bringing back this item for your consideration. And just as a reminder for the public and for the council, we're referring to the sale of 5.6 acres of Pioneer Park to the Pass Robles Event Center, better known as our Midstate Fair and 16th Agricultural DAA, which is the District Agricultural Agricultural Association. I'll spit it out. As you know, for the better part of about five to six years, we've been trying to work with the the fair as well as the state to have this sale executed. And for various reasons, that's been challenged up until recently. I'm happy to report to the council that it appears that we've come to resolution with the state on a sales agreement. That was the last thing that was holding us up was getting the contract in order and prepared for execution, which appears that we've finally gotten to that state. So tonight, as council requested, if for some reason we hadn't come to an agreement, then council would have the option of pulling that agreement and canceling it. But at this point, staff's recommendation to the council is to continue moving forward, to bring this item back with and to follow all of our noticing procedures for council to consummate the transaction. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council questions of staff? Mr. Strong?
So you're suggesting that we continue the item to a future meeting?
At this point, yes. We're going to request that you direct staff to bring back this item along with any applicable noticing and contract for final authorization and execution by the council and the city.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open to the public. This is your opportunity to speak, and we do invite you to come forward at this time. Thank you, sir.
Maintain this place is going to mean long-term integrity of Pass Robles past and a pathway to its future. So I'm glad that you're going to do this, and I hope you get this done and completed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just got a message from the city attorney. Apparently, we're having some audio problems and she can't hear.
It's resolved.
Okay. Thank you.
Mic's back on. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Linda Becker. I was here three months ago when this room was filled with people concerned about this particular issue. So I'm just curious to know when it will come back because this room will probably be filled with many people. Is that going to be at the next city council meeting or next year?
We'll get you that answer.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hi, Jeff Carr, Pass Robles. Well, I'm glad to see the recommendation here. I was a little concerned about what was going to happen tonight because you haven't told us anything about this agreement since the last time. And there were a lot of open issues that were discussed at the last meeting and concerns that I would like to see all addressed before, obviously, the agreement, but before you do anything. So I think the right thing to do would be to let this go and come back to the council later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I see no one rising, no one in line online. I will close the public comment, bring it back to the council for a discussion. We did have a question, Mr. City Manager. When do we anticipate having this agreement back on the agenda for consummation?
That's the answer depends. We plan on having it back as quickly as we can, but keeping in mind that we have to execute an agreement that's going to start off with the 16th DAA, make its way through the state for signatures, which includes a hearing with the state's Department of Public Works for final approval. And once it's executed, then all the signatures are in place. So there's noticing requirements, there's a few hoops that we have to jump through. But speaking with Ms. Hull, who's online, and she can probably answer this, I think we anticipate that this deal can be wrapped up prior to the beginning of the new year.
Thank you. Our city attorney is online, and I'd like to ask, there was a question about the open issues that were discussed the last time we had this before us. And we have had very productive meetings with the fair board and with representatives in the state of California over the adherence to the agreement that was established back in 2016. Can you comment on whether that's been accomplished?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. We have had numerous discussions with the state and with the 16th DAA, and we have come back to terms. Basically, all the terms that were in the 2016 agreement will be presented in the new agreement. We are still waiting on finalization from the state on a couple of minor items, but we think we've come back to resolution with the deal that was originally anticipated. And assuming that we get back a positive feedback from them this week, which we anticipate, we hope to bring the first set of actions back to the council in December.
Thank you very much. This has been an issue, for those of you who don't know, that we've been working on, on and off, at one rate of speed or another for the last five years. And it's been in the last 90 days that the fair board and the city of Pass Robles have been able to come together and reestablish our agreement on the issues that were discussed back in 2016 and impress upon the state counterparts the need that those agreements be adhered to. At this point, it appears that we've been successful and that both sides are satisfied. And we hope that 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 agreement will be coming back to us in just a couple of months. Any further discussion? Yes. Mr. Gregory?
Do we need to make a motion on this, Elizabeth, or just make a straw vote?
I think just either a motion or just general consensus to direct staff to come back to you at the earliest possible time with the next steps.
So I'll go ahead and make that recommendation that we direct staff to return to city council, following all noticing procedures to allow the council to consider this transaction.
Motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. Discussion, Mr. Bousch.
So I just want to say thank you very much to both the fair board and to the city council for providing a good example on how long-term dialogue can can often resolve even the most difficult situations. I want to say thank you very much to everyone who's reached out. I think this may have been the most popular topic since my short stint on the on the city council. So it worked out very well. Keep the faith. Good things do happen.
Thank you. Councilman Hammond?
I was just going to say, it won't be any delay on our part. If there's any, it'll be more on the states, which took almost five, six years to get to this point anyway. So I think we can expect hopefully in a month or two, we should be fine.
Mr. Gregory?
I'd just like to make one comment that is not part of the motion. Would you and Colleen join us next time we have to deal with the state agency of general services to help us?
That was very helpful.
Whatever you did was a miracle.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one item that was removed from consent. That's item number seven, approval of a new city park event, First Baptist Church caroling. Frida, would you like to give us the details of that event, please?
Absolutely. The First Baptist Church is proposing to stage a community caroling event at the gazebo at City Park on December 16th from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. It's a performance-based event with a 40-person choir and two barber shop quartets. And those are the details. Main Street is aware of the event and endorses it.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll open to the public. This is your opportunity to comment.
Question?
I'm sorry, Joe.
Yeah, Frida, when are we doing the, I'm assuming we're still doing the candle lighting or the tree lighting?
Yes, it's on the Friday right after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
It's light up the park.
This will be a couple of weeks after that.
Correct.
Very good.
Any other, any other question? Okay. We'll open for public comment. This is your opportunity. Welcome.
Hi, Linda Becker again. I was trying to look on our calendar online to see what events are coming up in December. And I really couldn't find much detail. So I know we always have the tree lighting, we have a parade, but I'm wondering if we're going to have anything for a menorah lighting.
Okay. We'll try to get an answer for that.
There's
One sec. Anything else? Anyone else like to comment? I see no one rising, no one online. We'll close public comment. Back to the council. Mr. Bousch?
So as far as the calendar, Main Street, I just downloaded theirs. It's a very intensive calendar for December and November. But check Main Street as well. Yeah, they do a great job.
Yeah. And Frida, you can fill in here where my ignorance begins. And I'm not aware of a menorah lighting ceremony, but certainly it's something that could be staged, right?
Correct. Yes. There's nothing on the calendar right now.
Not not scheduled, but not prohibited.
Correct.
Right. Any further discussion? Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, again, I'd like to thank the First Baptist for
Mr. Mayor, yeah, again, I'd like to thank First Baptist for making Paso Robles again what it is. This is going to become a cool Here We Come caroling. So I'd like to make approve number seven then to approve the request for First Baptist Church to present a Here We Come caroling in the city park, December 16th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Gregory. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bousch?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Item 16, city manager update, current city activities. Anything going on?
We have lots going on, Mr. Mayor. So in the upcoming weeks, as Mr. Hammond brought out, we're kind of reemerging into our event season as we approach the holidays. So we do have a Christmas parade coming. We also have the lighting ceremony in the park that we talked about. And again, to reiterate, we also have a New Year celebration that's being planned by staff as well. So there's lots going on in the community. Of course, we have an election coming up in about a week, so we encourage everybody to go to the polls and get those ballots in, and we'll be reporting back on that. But that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you. Council Business Committee reports. Mr. Bousch.
So past couple of weeks, been busy campaigning, attended the Cal Cities Dinner. I had a bit of correspondence regarding the wisdom of having our water rate meeting just before the holidays on December 20th. I don't know if anything can be done about that at this point, but I assured those people I would bring it up. And I think we talked earlier, I think it was Mr. Carr brought up, are PowerPoints that we use here at the meeting available at some point? I'd like to bring that back for a discussion and making those available as part of the agenda.
Very good. Councilman Strong.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a busy time, and actually, I was virtual on the last meeting, so I didn't make a report of what was concluding that particular day, as a matter of fact. And that was when I represented the state of California and all the regional governments of the state at the National Board Meeting Conference for the National Association of Regional Councils. And that's all the regional governments of the United States, which was held in Kansas City. And we had many people there from across the country, major leaders of local government, both county and cities. And we had very good people from the federal government there as well. So we did talk to a number of very important people. The Economic Development Area's Regional Director from the Denver region was there and just gave us an awful lot of information on grants that might be available in the near future, gave me the contact information, so we can look into some of that for our economic development and see if we can get some federal money to assist us with that, so we don't have to do it all out of our own. And that's, there was a Congress's continuing resolution provided $6 billion over the next two years for those funds. And they're looking to create the next generation of Silicon Valleys, primarily areas interested in outer space and in mining asteroid belts, putting up satellites, things like that. So it sounds like it might fit into our current agenda pretty well. And hopefully, we can get a lot of help there. We also had a very good presentation from the Regional Administrator of SAM HSA on substance abuse. And it was a very good thing with the report that there were 107,000 deaths from fentanyl in the United States in 2021, almost all of it coming into illegal organizations and people that were selling it on the streets illegally. They did capture in Texas enough fentanyl brought in illegally to kill 200 million people. Thank God they got it, and it's off the streets. So there's a lot of things that they have done. They finished a $100 million project, and anyone who is facing a life-threatening situation or dealing with somebody with a life-threatening situation, who is possibly dying or unconscious or has taken an overdose, can now call 988. It is an active national helpline for anything dealing with a death, a near-death situation. So keep that in mind. It was a very good conference, got a lot done. Then I'm going to be dealing with regional problems as far as rail and highways, et cetera. Well, I just did deal with one about the same time on rail, and we have problems for our own rail system, and that is the Pacific Surf liner as well as Amtrak coming from San Diego on up to the Bay Area and beyond, because we are having the bluffs slide into the ocean. And we have had actual waves coming up and hitting our trains on those tracks that are very close. That's primarily down by Delray. It's down near, I'm trying to think of that area. It's near, just south of LA. And then also, we're having it up by, in the Santa Barbara County, right near Vandenberg Air Force Base. So we're having a lot of problems. We've had to close the tracks, we've had to take trains off the track, stop the service, and bus people between places. So we're hoping to get something done there, and that leads to the next thing that I did, because I went to the Central Coast meeting of the League of California Cities chaired by our mayor, who is the regional chairman of that particular group right now. And we were privileged to have present there the State Treasurer, Fiona Ma, and her, one of her chiefs of staff, and she was very gracious to talk to us. And she's a train fan. When she heard my report on the train, she said, they want to talk to me and have a meeting with me. And we're talking possibly a couple of billion dollars in order to move tracks inland and shore up the buffs and try to get something to get our tracks, our trains back on course. And she's also very much interested in some of our projects locally, especially on interregional things such as Highway 46 East. So we'll be working with that, and I'm hoping to meet with them very soon. I did a lot of work with people and a lot of, I've been online a lot with people who have been asking a lot of questions and making a lot of suggestions and discussing a lot of controversial subjects. And one of the things that I dealt with, and I've given a copy to each member of the council, and I have a whole sack of copies back on the table there, some research I did because of people's interest in the danger of drugs and thing, illicit activities and other activities that might be affecting our teens. So I tried to go into very deep research, and my report, which is on the back, is my personal report. It's not a city council report, but it does give the sources of every statement that's in there. So anybody can check it and go and see the New England Journal of Medicine or reports that were made on Fox News or ABC News or anywhere else that I'm quoting, including federal administration. So that's available to everybody. Finally, I'll be dealing with some of our regional transit issues tomorrow, where tomorrow morning I will be in that board meeting. We do have issues with our buses, we have some good news, and we also have some problems. But we're getting a little more money finally, even for our local transit. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Houseman Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meetings I've attended was Integrated Waste Management, right after our last meeting, the Paso Basin Groundwater Cooperative. We had a meeting there. What's interesting is that the supervisor is going to be hearing an item, actually, I think it's going to be the Planning Commission first, where we're first starting to have a discussion about limiting crops expansion with regard to water use in our groundwater basin. So it's a way of controlling and being more and sustainably with what we have to work with. So you're going to start hearing more about that, I think, coming year or so. Also attended the Tascadero GSA, Groundwater Sustainability Agency. They continue to work on their plan, the GSP, which we are a party to and have some interest in, because they're contiguous to Paso Robles. Also went to the Airport Commission. Ty Lewis was there, our city manager, gave his report. Also, we discussed the RAF, ACI, or FBO is hosting the RAF coming this next year, first in January, and then I think two or three other times in the remainder of 2023, where they're going to be bringing in a A400 aircraft, which is very large. And we're going to be watching our runways and taxiways to see how that heavyweight can sustain and be used or not, depends on how we come out of that. They're going to be training out at Fort Hunter Liggett, and they use their SEAL team, equal to our SEAL team, come over here to US and train. They like the area because it's very, very restrictive for what they need to have in reuse and the ground, and everything about it is just perfect for RAF to train. So that's why they like to come to Paso Robles. Also attended the Channel Islands League of Cities, very good meeting. Also listened to Fiona Ma that was there, and I'm interested in the discussion that staff may have had. And, you know, one of the things that I mentioned to Gus Curry here tonight, you know, our lobbyist up there for Caltrans and concentrating, you know, our able ability to get some state funds for what we have going on here, is I hope that we were talking with her while she was here, too. That sounds like, again, with the way she was speaking, is that, you know, there's money available, and if we don't ask for it, we won't get it. So I just want to make sure somebody's working on that. The other thing I had to tonight was the J-20 money that I asked Ryan about. And if there's enough consent here, I'd like to see if maybe we can bring an action item or at least a discussion item to program some of that reserve money that we're starting to see accumulate in the J-20 funds, especially, again, related to street maintenance, particularly on the West Side, which has been up since 2012, it's not been a whole lot. So I'm hoping that we can discuss that and, you know, get a consensus and hopefully do something more than what we already have programmed.
Some council consensus to pursue that?
Yep. Yeah, like to hear it. So, yeah, it's Ty, if we can bring an action item or some sort of a discussion point back where we can understand what we have and what we can talk about.
John, a question on that. Are you willing to wait on when we do that to find the results of the election and any possible re-vote on extension?
Well, no, whenever staff wants to bring it back and counter it. It's just something I wanted to bring up, get on the radar.
It's only a week.
Yeah, we're not going to get it done in a week, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Yep. Steve, Mayor Martin and myself met with John Pashong in our annual meeting for our regional meeting, discussed mental health issues and ways to try to get some mental health facilities in Paso Robles, and talked about homelessness. And then three hours later, we had lunch, Mayor Martin and I and John Pashong with Sam Blakesley, who's the chair of the committee from the county for the, I guess, the intent to reduce homelessness by 50% in the next five years, to discuss the funding coming to us and how we can help affect those ideas. It was very, very good conversation, and I think it was a good eye-opener for Mr. Blakesley, who has heard a lot of different things, which is good. Then Councilman Hammond and I went to the Echo meeting. So it was a local meeting with the businesses and Echo, and the police department was there. It was really nice to have everybody there, and Helica. And Helica's keeping an eye on all of us, so this is reporting out right now. But the conversation was really good, a lot of nice interaction with the police department. And unfortunately, we didn't see a lot of business owners there, but we're hearing through the grapevine that things are getting better, and Echo is actually going out and outreach in, they started a cleanup program out there with their manager there. And we're going to make a little effort ourselves to go knock on doors and get some of the businesses to please show up and visit with us while we're there. And then for the Central Coast Cities event, Mr. Gregory is responsible for getting everybody happy and sharing money, because they fed them all the wine when they walked in the door.
Well done.
And I think it worked. I'm not sure.
Or wasn't.
But, and then it was quite extraordinary listening to Mrs. Ma, and I had a chance to talk with her briefly, but she's very, she's very capable in what she does, and she'd be an interesting, I saw Chris, everybody got a chance to talk to her. She's got a lot of power, and it'd be nice to get some hold of that, some of the funding from her. So that's all I got to report.
Thank you. So I want to start off by piggybacking on the comments about meeting with Ms. Ma at both of our dinner and prior to that. We had the opportunity prior to that dinner on that day for the city manager and myself and members of staff to meet with her at City Hall and go into deep detail about our traffic infrastructure needs on Highway 46 and how that drives regional economic development vis-à-vis the proposed tech corridor at the spaceport and a variety of other systems. She was very interested in the story we had to tell, and in fact, I believe, over the course of the afternoon into the evening, she actually proposed several alternatives for us to pursue funding sources for those issues in the future. So I think it's very important that we have her informed, have her as an ally, because as we go forward and speak to other agencies, we can say, you know, we've spoken to the state treasurer, and this is the information we get from her, and I think it's going to open some doors for us. So that was very good. I want to thank Melissa and Shawna for taking care of that dinner on Friday night. It was a great event. Everybody had a good time. We had visitors from, what, up to two dozen different cities here in the city of Paso Robles. It's the first time we've had a Cal Cities Dinner since before the pandemic, and it was a great time, and it went very smoothly thanks to Shawna and Melissa. So we appreciate that. I also want to thank State Senator John Laird for his efforts in getting funding for Creston Road. That's critical for us in the city, but also he's helped us out with a discussion at the state level on the fair city council issue regarding the property acquisition. It always helps to have somebody in his position and elevation to sort of mediate and knock on the right doors to make sure that we're talking to the right people and getting the right attitude coming back. He's been very helpful in that, and I appreciate that. Other activities, attended the monthly mayor's lunch in Morro Bay, also attended a Paso Robles history presentation at the Paso Robles Historical Society and the Carnegie Library in the park downtown. I attended a dinner at Cas Winery that was put on by SlowCal for several dozen agencies that booked tours from countries around the world. And this was a luxury tourism exposé, the culmination of several days of touring around our county. I spoke to many people who had never heard the words Paso Robles before and were just stunned at the local beauty and the wines and the tourism opportunities, and they're definitely coming back and telling their people to come also. So that was very productive. Was downtown last night for the Halloween promotion, thousands of kids and their parents, all costumed up and having a great time. Glad that that was, that was put on by Main Street and supported by our police department and fire department and other city departments and a lot of local organizations, a great community event, and gave kids the opportunity to come downtown and have a safe trick-or-treating experience and wear their costumes and just have great fun. So that was wonderful. Other than that, not much happened. Upcoming events, Development Review Committee, Monday, November 7th, 3:30 p.m. Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, November the 8th, 6:30 p.m. Library Board meeting Thursday, November 10th at 9:00 a.m. Senior Citizen Advisory Commission meeting Monday, November 14th. That'll be at 1:30 p.m. Development Review Committee, Monday, November 14th, 3:30 p.m. And the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, November the 15th at 6:30 p.m. Deadline for submitting items for the regular meeting on the 15th is Wednesday, November the 2nd. If there's no further business for the council, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Hammond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.